I'm gonna call our meeting, Lord, I'm gonna ask the Alderman beds to leave us some prayer and then we're gonna have a pledge allegiance afterwards. I'm gonna throw you a curve.
Okay, Saturday, that's right. Father in heaven, we are truly grateful for the day that you've given us, grateful for your love and your goodness to us. I ask you, Lord, that you help us to never forget how good you are to us. If it wasn't for you in our lives, how worse we would be. And, Lord, as we take care of the town's business, I pray, Lord, you help us to make wise decisions before we pray this in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Let's say, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I'd like to thank everybody that's here and I'm gonna start with our roll call. Uh, she is, she's making copies. Y'all didn't probably bring your budget.
I didn't even bring them.
All right, they should be back in. I apologize to everybody on Facebook. And we do have to wait for roll call and before we get started. I tell you what I can do. Tonight is one of our dear Alderman persons' last meetings, I think, unless something else comes up. And Ms. Rosa Denby has served her district well and her town well. We appreciate the work that you've done, Ms. Rosa. And we hope that you and Melvin, that you'll keep Melvin straight. And that we're gonna miss you and you've done an outstanding job and we appreciate. I know that you can continue through the beautification, that you've had a hand in beautifying your district, all the pretty lights, working with beautification, Ms. Cassandra out there. And y'all have done a lot for the district and it's really, really, it shows and I appreciate the work that you've done and out there. And still, we've still got a lot of things to do that you were, took a part in, even though it wasn't just District One, it was District Two, District One, and the whole town, you know? Things like the turnarounds and improvements and we really appreciate that. So, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna, yeah. She did a good job. I guess I'm gonna do this, uh, I was here, but one other, we have one other person who's been with the town nineteen years. Uh, when he got here, he was already sixty years old. And, uh, but he's gonna be retiring and he's done a good job with the street and sanitation department. I tell everybody all the time, he has the hardest job in the town. And, uh, but anyway, Lee Stags, we thank you for the work that you've done. Uh, you've not only been an outstanding worker and, and someone that, not only a worker, but also a friend. And we appreciate that. And now he's into, uh, he's got a video content called Bumpy Frog Fishing. I'm putting your plug in there. This guy,
don't forget to live sharing.
If you wanna, if you wanna learn how to cook fish, clean fish, catch fish, that dude, you just watch his little, his internet thing. Anyway, again, thank you all for, thank you all for your service again for the town. And I hope we can do some more here in the future, but I just wanted to recognize y'all. And now Pa's here and she's gonna start her with our roll call.
Town of Badalia Board of Alderman Roll Call for the special meeting of the mayor and board of Alderman, dated June eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Alderman Betts.
Present.
Alderman Denby.
Present.
Alderman Gardner. Alderman Proch.
Here.
Alderman Smith. Mayor of the Reciprocity, the former board's president and accountant.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna, we're down. Somebody wants to make a public comment, they can at this point, but anything relates to the agenda, that's requirement of meeting law. We're gonna bypass that because we're gonna go in, uh, public hearing here in just a minute. Uh, and we're, we're going to, uh, first thing we're gonna do is, uh, so is there anybody wanna make a comment? I'll say that first, nobody make a comment. We're gonna move on to our agenda. First thing we have is public hearing of an ordinance to amend the operating budget of revenues and expenses for the town of Badalia, Louisiana for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four. And can I hear a motion if we go into public hearing?
Make your motion.
Motion made by Alderman Proch. Second by Alderman Betts, all in favor, say aye. We are now in the public hearing. Anybody got a question on the amending of this budget for, uh, for this past year? Anybody have any questions from the public? If not, can I hear a motion to exit public hearing?
Make the motion.
Motion made by Alderman Denby, here, second. Second by Alderman Smith, all in favor, say aye. Okay, we're out of that. Now we're gonna go to board discussion and vote on an ordinance to amend the operating budget of revenues and expenses for the town of Badalia, Louisiana for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four. We'll have discussion from Alderman, but first, just to lay a little groundwork, uh, Louisiana, uh, budget law requires that if your budget has a variance of over five percent, whether it's expenses or revenues in your general funds, special revenue funds, that you have to amend your budget to make it work. And as everybody knows, just like the budget we're gonna approve tonight, you may, uh, a budget is nothing but a basis, it's appropriates money for us to be able to run the town, pay bills, and more or less give our best estimate what we feel like the expenses and incomes can be for the town. Some of the things we don't know, Endeavor does a fantastic job putting this together. We worked together on this. And forecasting Mississippi River and what it's gonna do, whether it's gonna be high or low, well, you know what I'm saying. So it could be, and this year, uh, we're more or less gonna have to amend the budget because the river was again low. Uh, but now it is, it is generating good now. Thank, thank the Lord. But anyway, but that is why we're having to amend the budget this year primarily for that. No, no other extenuating expenses or income, but just more or less just to stone us out of the compliance part of the, uh, of being in the budget that we approved. Is there any questions from council? Okay, there being no questions, uh, no discussion. I hear a motion to amend the budget as, as presented?
Motion.
Motion made by Alderman Proch, here, second. Second by Alderman Betts, all in favor, say aye. Okay, uh, I guess we need to get. Alderman Proch made the motion and Alderman Betts made the second, just all in favor to amend the budget. So that has been approved. He's made, uh, our, our, our council is, is on the sick list. Uh, our prayers are with him. I think he's, he's having some issues that he deserves prayer. And, uh, we hope that George will have, get a speedy recovery. But he's not here again tonight. And, uh, so if somebody, somebody taking a minutes, okay. There was no discussion, uh, by the way, uh, and no, no comment from both. Okay, moving on to number three, which is public hearing on an ordinance adopting the operating budget of revenues and expenses for the town of Badalia, Louisiana for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five. This is our upcoming budget that we're looking to approve. And now do I hear a motion to enter public hearing? Motion made by Alderman Denby, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Smith, all in favor, say aye. Okay, we're in the public hearing. Does anybody in the public have any comments on the current budget as we're gonna present it tonight? Any comments? Okay, with no comments, uh, can I hear a motion that we exit public hearing?
Motion.
Motion made by Alderman Proch, here, second. Second by Alderman Betts, all in favor, say aye. We're gonna move on to number four, which will be, uh, full board discussion and vote on adopting the operating budget of our revenues and expenses for the town of Badalia, Louisiana for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five. And before we get into discussion, as before, I'd like to just say, make a couple of comments on some things. And then I'm gonna open it up to our, our department heads as they wanna talk about, uh, a little bit in their departments. If, if y'all wanna do that, if it pleases the council, whatever they wanna do, this is, this is the time that they can ask questions. And we encourage them to do so if they have those. Some of the things that's not in this budget that we haven't addressed, and I'm gonna ask for tonight. One of the things I would like to ask the Alderman, each one, is to budget and add to this budget five thousand dollars to the general fund. For each Alderman or Alderman to select one person in their district that will, that is going, is a high school graduate from Badalia or a Badalia graduate, no matter which school they went to, and gonna be attending college for a summer work program. That we could have five individuals that would work in the street and sanitation to help, give them not only some work, to help them maybe get, uh, get some money for school, but also maybe work in some specialized places with supervision to clean up some areas of town, whether it's, you know, trimming around, uh, you know, running weed eaters or cleaning up alleys that we haven't got to. And just give them, uh, an opportunity to make a little money plus catch up some things that we need around town. Uh, and I just want to ask Alderman how they feel about that. We're, I'm gonna go through my list. Also on the riverfront, y'all know that a lot of our standards, even though we have money in the riverfront fund, this isn't in the budget that this year, I would like to see us maybe go ahead and finish painting the, the gateway and the rest of our standards as well as removing all the paved stone from the, from the bench areas and concreteing those and having scored in concrete and some type of etching in those decorative. And then I'd also like the Alderman to consider a pay raise for themselves. And also, but that would be with conditions. Uh, I would like to put the condit, conditional on, uh, whatever raise they give themselves, that it's conditional on them attending the meetings. This would be an incentive. Uh, cause I know that we, we got, uh, we need attendance. Aldermen are elected to help have meetings. Uh, and I understand if people can't be here, Alderman Proch missed last meeting, he was, he was on vacation. I understand that. I bet that's one of the only ones he's missed.
Not two minutes.
In eight years. We've had one Alderman with this meeting tonight makes twenty meetings that have been missed just this term, twenty meetings. And to me, that's, that's not acceptable. And I think if we do, y'all would consider yourselves a raise. I think you deserve it. I would like to make a contingent on they don't show up. We can't lower the monthly rate of seven hundred dollars, but they don't show up for a meeting and just unexcused. They wouldn't get whatever raise you give yourselves if you do so tonight, take that up. That they would not get that. They would bump back to the seven hundred. And I think that we would be, uh, not violating any laws to set that up regardless of who it is. But, uh, anyway, that's, that's some of the things I would like, that's the three things that I would like for us to consider tonight, uh, to add to that. And the other thing that I didn't.
Mayor, what, what was your river question?
Well, it was just to, uh, get bids on, uh, finish the painting of, of all the standards and also the gateway that really, we're really starting to see some deterioration on those standards. That's holding the lights all up down the riverfront. And those pavers, a lot of those are getting settled in the sand and everything. And I think if we, if we can, we could, uh, fix that, concrete that and just have it etched for scored, it would still be very pretty and, and something decorative. And I think we've got some preliminary bids that really wasn't that bad to do those things. It wasn't that, way cheaper than what I thought. Uh, and the other thing is, I, I'm gonna leave it to the council. I'll refrain from any kind of, uh, across the board pay raises. I'm gonna let the Alderman debate that amongst themselves. Now, what they wanna do for us across the board are, are establish a certain amount of money for incentive and merit raises for employees through the town based on what their department heads wanna recommend. So with that being said, uh, I'm gonna open it up and if, and we can take that. Uh, and I encourage the Alderman to ask any questions of any of the, the department heads. And we can do it either way I want to. We can have each one of them get up or y'all can, if you have questions, y'all can call them up and ask them. So how does, what's the pleasure of the council tonight?
I don't have a whole lot of questions.
If you got some though, I mean, if you got some though that you'd like to ask.
Not a whole lot.
Okay.
Not really.
Uh, really? Ms. Rosa, John?
I think they, uh, they all out there got, pretty much got what they were looking at, right? Any, I do have this question. What do y'all have any comments, even before we make a comment? What comments have y'all got, if any, concerning the budget?
No comment from the.
No comment from y'all?
I'd just like to thank y'all for working together like y'all have in the past and, uh, it's went real smooth with y'all working together and everything's, like you said, everything we've asked for, y'all have given to us and we want to thank y'all for that. That's all I have to say for it. Um, as far as the raises across the board, I mean, I'd like to put in for across the board, if you would, or if not, we can do the merit raises, whichever y'all prefer on that. But I'm gonna thank y'all for y'all working together so everything does work smooth.
Well, one thing on the across the board, did we not just do that? Did we not just do it across the board?
Yeah.
You did last year. You did five percent last year.
Right.
So.
And that's kinda like a cost of living raise is what I'm considering it as, you know?
Right. But again, it was a good one.
Right.
More than I wanted to get. Be honest. I'm just being honest.
It was less than what Ms. Denby wanted to give.
So we compromised, right?
Do what?
But we compromised.
We did. And I'm sure we'll compromise again.
Yeah. And, uh, as far as all your safety and everything, equipment and everything, you.
Oh, we've got a truck that's, uh, I talked to Jay and them about today that we just found out about, uh, pump on it is, we're having problems with it. It's in Chaneyville right now, getting worked on. So, uh, had brake problems and pump problems. And they got the brake problems fixed, but the pump problems can be a little more in depth than what we were thinking. And I've already spoke to him about it and I guess it'll wind up going on this next year's budget is what it'll be. Since it's right here, ten days left for the billing cycle. Uh, other than that, once we get that truck back, we should be good to go with that.
Yeah, there's something seriously, uh, as far as employees. I mean, we're getting, we're short headed as it is right now with the fire department. And it's getting the guy getting ready to retire and put the ballers. We've got a couple out there sick right now, um, another police. Uh, they're both wanting to come back, but they, they're gonna get well enough to come back. But the fire department, as y'all know, we've got each time one man is off, someone has to work it. So they're gonna be getting hammered with a lot of overtime. And that's just with the regulars off, not counting someone taking vacation or calling it. So maybe we prioritize from Facebook. We have to pass through the, for example. Uh, city's Facebook, we went through, you know, GM's open one up for the O E P office for that. As far as applicants who might.
That's what I've heard. And, and, uh.
Um, I tell you something, she stayed the day for Monroe. They were, there starts some type of problem there where they're getting some of the high schools to, to come in and they're training them as far as getting trained as firefighter one and firefighter two. I don't know what kind of liability that's gonna fall into. Someone under eight, that, I don't know, we'd have to check with them on that.
Uh, yeah, that, that would, that would require some. I mean, I, I know if I had a youngster, I wouldn't want them. I know we ask them to go fight at eighteen, nineteen years old, but, but, uh, we don't wanna, if, if somebody had a kid, one of the kids had a dream to be a firefighter and that's what he wants to do, we're certainly not gonna hold him back. We, we wanna be open to, to also parents wishes and, and what kid themselves wanna do.
Uh, we can give with the fire chief in Monroe, see what kind of deal they got for him on.
Okay.
If that would be good, I think.
All right. And Johnny, I mean, I think you did, I mean, you, the only thing you've got in there this year is the, uh, improvements to that old fire station, which I think's needed.
Right.
Uh, I think that would be, be something we need to do.
Julie giving us the police side of it as well, you know?
Yeah.
She went in, uh, the designer went in, you know, and looked at architect, didn't look at it and see we'll use that, make this, this remodeling, just having that add on like we were first.
Yeah.
So that, that should help a lot.
So what's your plan B if you, I mean, you know, if you don't get the people? I know you have, I know you're struggling because I done talked to some people about how struggle, how bad it is, you know? It's really pitiful, but it's the way it is.
Great as far as the paycheck.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, as far as the family goes.
Well, but we, we, I mean, we, let's, let's, let's advertise, get it out there best we can and look at it. You know, and if we can find especially someone with experience would be great.
Right.
But, you know, because it would be cheaper to hire somebody to keep them on overtime.
Getting ready, we might be losing more right now to go to the fair, it could be the cheapest.
Mm-hmm, I heard.
Already interviewed for that.
Well, we thank y'all for what you do for us, because until, until you need the fire department at ambulance, you don't really, they're kinda out of sight, out of mind, but I promise you, if you need them, y'all are there. So, thank y'all, Johnny.
Thank y'all.
I know Frankie, we, I don't, I don't think the police department had anything extra in their budget this year, uh, you know? Oh, do you?
Um, well, it's not in the budget, but he, he wanted about six of those, um, they're shields, but they're kinda made out of a, a board, like a Y can race forward.
Right.
And you can use it at the schools for their schoolway officers.
Probably, it's gonna be about sixteen thousand dollars.
Okay. And what, what they're talking about is, is, uh, the police chief is requesting they'll be in the schools. It's basically like you said, a board that if there's some kind of issue, something, uh, they can get behind it, look through it, it's bulletproof and they can actually shield themselves and go into a room or something and protect themselves. And, uh, if they had to go in and help somebody, uh, and I don't think that would be a problem. Does anybody got an issue with that?
Nope.
Uh, one of the things I do know that we're talking about taking, uh, in the garbage department, you know, one of the trucks that are coming off lease, we wanna keep it and get rid of our three, I think it's our.
RG three.
RG three. And, uh, that's a quarterback. Uh, but anyway, that old, what year model was that old truck?
It's two thousand and six.
Two thousand and six. And this wore out, but we have used it as a backup, but sometimes those new trucks, they, if they, with the regen and all on them, they have, they have a problem. We need to have them something that's really reliable to get out there. And I think if we upgrade that, they should be in good shape for, for years to come. Uh, and I think that's, that's, that's doable.
One other, one other thing I was gonna ask on that street and sanitation, uh, Jay, those, uh, those piece of equipment we were talking about, uh, that Eric was looking at. Did we budget those?
That's in utility.
Okay, it is.
Hopefully you'll have, you have to cover any ditch, drainage area in the town.
We've, uh, if, if anybody, and I like to meet with the Alderman, you know, going forward with this budget, you know, I, I've, I've been talking and sharing the plan for this next term and some things we wanna get done that we have, that I haven't got accomplished in eight years. And a lot of them are just enough drainage is black behind, for example, the Dollar Tree, though, that neighborhood back there. There's some drainage areas, Gregory Street. We've worked on it, but we ain't, we haven't completely solved those issues that we're wanting to get done. So, uh, there's, there's plenty of things that we want to keep on the front burner and can take care of some things that, uh, instead of just taking a stab at them, let's get them, get them completed. But that's gonna be something over these next, uh, this next two or three years, I would wanna get completed. Uh, but, uh, so is any, uh, I guess I'm gonna ask y'all, is there anything you'd like to see added to the budget?
No.
Alderman Betts? Alderman Denby? Alderman Smith? All right. Well, I guess I'll go back and ask, ask each one of you about what do you think about the summer work program for the kids? Just honest opinion.
They used to have some kind of summer.
Oh, they did.
But I think I'd, I'd love for y'all to have somebody in your district and no strings attached. I mean, just whoever y'all would like to, that you know, a, a outstanding young man or woman in, in your district that you'd like to see.
I hate to say it, but it's hard to get. I try to find them, give them, give them something to do and they don't want none. And if they do, they start, they don't make it, just plain and simple. You know, that's the problem I got with that, you know? Different world.
Do you wanna try to find somebody? You wanna, you wanna pass your one over to somebody?
Hey, man.
Well, let me ask you, Art, do, would you like to see us do that, if we could find some people to do that?
I think it'd be a good thing. I really, I really do. I mean, if you could, I know Randy's in that department. I don't know about that, uh, you know? He might, he might be too rough on them though. I'm, I'm just picking. No, I mean, it, I think it'd be an okay try, try to somewhere. I mean, we used to have people work back in my day. You got a job, you go to town, get a job sometimes, you know? Four, five people got to go to work. I did. I worked a little bit, but it's not a bad idea.
John?
No, I think it's good. Find somebody that wants to work. Make a little money.
Well, I, I, if we approve this tonight, y'all can go ahead and start working as soon as we get them. Ms. Rosa?
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. And I am sure that somebody in District One, I could find that would be willing to work. I don't think it would be hard.
And I guess I'm saying if you can't find somebody in your district, some, holler, we'll find somebody. Okay. All right. So let's, uh, Deborah, if we would add five thousand to the budget for the, uh, for that, if we could. All right, thank y'all for that. I, I just think it'd be, be something for us to do and we certainly will, you know? Cause that's, we do need to carry, because these are gonna be our citizens of the future.
I think it's a great idea.
Okay. Uh, a riverfront, I don't have a dollar amount on that. I'm, I'm guessing it could be anywhere from a hundred fifty to two hundred thousand dollars. But I just might, uh, and if y'all want to, we can. There's money in the fund now, correct, Deborah? We don't know exactly, I mean, well, we know what it is, but I mean, I can't call it right off the top of my head. It's two or three hundred thousand. Uh, two seventy?
Two hundred and seventy.
The, y'all, I think.
But that needs to be done.
It needs to be done.
It does need to be done.
Uh, so we'll just show that, uh, we, we would have to get bids and then, but we can say up to, let's, I'd say up to two hundred thousand, huh? I think might cover it. And that would leave money in there for other things that we need to do.
It continually makes money too.
Right. There's continued money's coming into it from occupational taxes. Okay. All right. So we add that. And then the other thing is, is, uh, and this up y'all's discussion is a, a, a raise for yourselves. And, uh, and, but I would like to tie it to attendance, the difference, if, whatever that is. And I, I'm gonna leave, I'm gonna stay out of it. I just think I'd like to see y'all get something because of work and.
I'm not much on raises myself. It's me.
Okay. And again, that's as y'all's call. I mean, that's strictly, I mean.
But that's up to everybody. I don't care. They voted in. I'm just saying in my personal opinion, that is me. But again, if we do, I like, I like what you said. It does need to be tied to attendance, because you should be here. You should be, huh?
I said, you'll take it if we voted, right?
That's up to y'all. But I mean, if we do, if we do, I agree with the fact, yes, people need to be at the meetings. I don't care who you are. You need to be here. And I did miss last time, but it was, I had a legitimate.
You had a legitimate, but like I said.
I'm not gonna just not be here.
Right.
You know, and I make my plans around that fact because that's what we're here for.
Same thing. Unless, unless it's a town related deal, I think I missed one, but I was, I was going to Seattle.
One cause your blood pressure one time.
Yeah, and my. And I promise you, if it hadn't been, I'd have been.
It will, this will become like part of the ordinance?
Yes, we can make an ordinance. I don't think you can make it. And then, I mean, I don't think you can make ordinance to say, well, that's seven hundred dollars that's currently that the Alderman get, you can't decrease that by ordinance because they were elected officials and you can't delay, do that for the next. But it doesn't say that you can't, any raise incentive that you put on top of those, that, that would be, you know, um, you can't do that. I mean, if they would, if they don't show up to me, you don't get that difference. And what amount y'all would like to go to, I mean, that's up to y'all. Ms. Rosa, how you feel about it? I know Ms. Rosa's going off, it's probably.
This is my last meeting.
Yeah. You can either make three good friends or a bad friend. I'm just kidding. It's, it's whatever you, I mean.
Oh, here comes Cornell. Look at him.
Well, uh, I just wanna say about the race and you said you talked about, uh, I feel like, uh, don't get some races, you know, everybody should get something. I'm not, I'm not big about, uh, races and everything. Uh, with my budget, you know, it's only like a race. You know, from all the parties, each year, you know, I put in the budget, it's gonna have a save in itself. You know, from year after year, all we, you know, do out there is to make it happen. You know, find a way to save the money for an occupation, it's like. Well, I feel like, you know, it continues to have the first class thing that this town, uh, didn't have. Well, I feel like, you know, it continues to have the first-class service that this town, uh, didn't have. God knows how long, I could say, on tape for twenty-four years, you know, uh, I think it'll be a good thing to just achieve to pay for, you know.
Well, I, I, I'll say this, I don't have a problem with achievement. Across-the-board doesn't work for me sometimes, you know? You know what I'm saying? Do you understand where I'm coming from? Okay. There should be some kind of criteria in which you earn that raise, you know? Not every year you shouldn't get a raise. I know my wife is a schoolteacher for, how many years did y'all not get a raise, Miss Demby?
Oh, many, many.
I mean, name them, thirteen, nineteen? So I'm putting it in perspective of this, so. But to make an incentive type of an award where you're, you can say, okay, pick out a few employees that say, okay, you, and note these other ones strive to make that, or, and then every so often, you give them a cross-the-board raise. That's just the way I deal with raises, because I want somebody to work for it and not just be giving it to them. And the bad boys get it just as good as the good boys that don't perform, you see? And that's the part I don't get. Now, if you got somebody supervising them says, okay, you're not going to be working for me anymore because you're not doing it, I got a problem, no problem with that either. You know what I'm saying? Ah, that's what I'm, I, I know where you're coming from. You know where I'm coming from.
All of that, she is the first-class servant.
Hmm, right. Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Cornell.
In the nineteen years that I've been doing this job, I've never asked the board for something that they didn't give. Anytime I'm thinking of mayor, I ask for a raise, or any of my guys, even though we had a cross-the-board raise, not a very time.
Right.
I would like to, I would love to see all of them pay at least twelve hundred dollars a month. I think that would be a great start, if y'all, y'all work hard, y'all get plenty of calls from residents. But I'd also like our, our, our employees to get across the board, same as Cornell would. We got the best city services in the state.
Yep.
We do, we do.
I agree with that. And look, I, I mean, it, it's evident every day of the work these guys do. And I'll be honest with you, you really can't pay you guys enough to watch, for what you do for. You know, a lot of people say, you know, what is, you know, I can't hear, you know, what does town do for our kids? You know, let me tell you what our town does for our kids. But you know what? Every night they come home, they got lights that's burning in their home, they got gas at a fire pit that you can cook them on food. They got clean water they can bathe in, you can wash her clothes. You want to ask me what we do for our kids? We do a lot. We make good roads for them to drive on, go into work, and they can get back and forth, go in places. We try to keep the ditches clean and the town clean. What else do you want us to do for your kid? What else you want us to do? Because y'all are doing it every day, and I recognize it. So when you say, what do we do for your kids? Think about it, and think about it. And we do it better than anybody. So, and that's because of you guys, not because of me, not because of anybody, but it's you guys and the team effort y'all do every day. Y'all are there. It's been evident every time. Just recently, y'all sat there, those guys worked all day in that heat. We had an accident up there, we broke poles in half. They worked till three or four in the morning, no sleep, no rest, and just a little bit to eat, maybe in one little break, you got that power back on. That is what I'm talking about, commitment that you won't find with nobody else, and you won't find it nowhere else. And I agree, we should consider, whatever's at the board's pleasure, some type of increase for our people. And, uh, and if they want to put it, if they want to put it, and if they want to put it, and, uh, and just establish a dollar amount and put it out there for us to work within our department. I also understand what Alderman Probst is saying, because you give, if you have a bad apple out there, that bad apple's getting recognized just like the good ones are. And I understand that. He's got good points, those are good points. But it's, so, I can understand the incentive it would be, well, look, you know what, you got to tighten up. You're going to have to be this A-team, not the B-team or the D-team, but the A-team to get this money. So I understand both things as they, if they go.
And don't argue with you both.
Right.
Plain and simple. I hear that all the time, you know? I mean, you know, that's part of, it's not that, you shouldn't do that. And if you do, that's part of your demerit from what you're going to get. You know, that's just, there's a lot of ways you could set it up, you know?
Alderman Betts?
Work as a team, you know?
Let's, let's, let's address, and I appreciate them coming up and speaking with employees. Let's, let's address the alderman part of it first, and then we'll come back to the, you know, any kind of rates. Because I do know at first of the year, we've got to elect, you know, department heads. We've got clerk, we got to elect, and there's going to be some, you know, I do want to discuss some salaries at that point, at that first meeting. Once we get these new positions filled and approved, we'll, we'll talk some more then, as far as, as far as monies go. But Alderman Betts, I'd like to get your feelings as far as, y'all want to add something for yourselves and, and, and us to start working on something. And again, it's, it's up to y'all's pleasure.
I'm not against a, a raise, but I think it does need to be tied to attendance. Come up, I, I told you I wanted to do something with, with the attendance, because I think that attendance is, is very important at, at our meetings, and, um, I think anything that we give should be tied, or I would like to see it tied to that. So I'm, I'm in favor of, of, of a raise, I mean, not, and I feel like I just super deserve one, but I would, uh, I appreciate it.
All right. And I, I'm asking this, I guess I may be going to tease twice, I don't know, but. Back to Alderwoman Demby, again, it's just, uh, you know, do you, you really indifferent, or this?
No, I don't want y'all to have a raise, because I'm not getting it. Yeah, I, I, you know, I was for it last year.
Right.
And I'm still for it. I think that, um, especially the department, uh, people, these people who are working, I think they do a magnificent job, and I say that all the time. They deserve, uh, a cross-the-board raise, and we do too, here, even though I won't be here, but I, I do think that a raise is in order.
Well, that speaks well. Alderman Smith?
Yeah, I, I just. What does an alderman think of yourself?
He doesn't want one, you know, last year.
I want to make sure the employees are taken care of fully.
Do you want to address that first, before we do? Do you want to address the employees before we all decide what y'all want to do?
Like I said, I, I'm a team player, boy, we all want to see you team today.
I do too.
You should get something, or. We should get something, they don't get something, I guess.
I understand.
Or just make it proportional to everybody. But whatever ours does go up, if it goes up, it does need to.
First thing we'd have to do is make sure that it's legal, and we'd get with the legislative officer, as well as the LMA council, and verify that this is something that we can do. And tie it to, uh, attendance. I think you can, as long as you don't decrease what was the, the amount of money they were getting at the time of, of the election. You can't decrease it, but you can increase it with conditions, I think so. Uh, I know Lisa said twelve hundred, I'd like to recommend a thousand if y'all want to do that. But also, I would like to recommend some type of cost-of-living raise across the board for the employees. Uh, and I would be glad for Alderman Probst or whoever wants to talk about, you know, in the future merit, uh, some type of merit paid for some employees that go above, beyond, and show up like Cornell, like you're saying they do. Uh, because I think, I think those people do need to be recognized in one way or another, whether it's time off or, or that, you know? We, we certainly want to be a good place to work and live, but we also want to make sure we continue to give the best service. We can't do that with people that's, that's not doing what they're supposed to do. So, uh, I believe what you guys want to do, add to the, to the budget, uh, it's not, it's not a killer for the budget for y'all to do that, and then we can discuss across the board for the employees, or if you want to do, set aside a pot of money for department heads to sit down and do merit raises.
I would rather us, I know, without, um, having some thought going into it, maybe next year, we sit down and, as you said, we come up with some kind of merit, but I would support a cross-the-board raise.
Okay.
Uh, for our employees.
All right. Now, Will, as Senator, now that we've talked about that, I guess this is the last thing we need to talk about, unless there's something else y'all want to add to it, is percentage. And, uh, I'm going to let y'all debate the percentage you want to do, that's, that's up to you. Uh, I'll support, I'll support what our council, you know, comes up with. And then there was quiet.
I have no idea.
Well.
Google it.
I will be, I will be honest, I will be honest with you, if you look at the cost of goods, our salaries, and money don't keep up with what inflation costs it.
Does, does the board want to discuss their pay first before they do the across-the-board? Because with the new ordinance, they will.
They will, they will get, they'll get that percentage. Yeah. It, it doesn't affect the, the cross-the-board, even though they do get that, it's such a smaller amount. It's not, it's not that nominal, even though, yeah, they would get it.
Right.
You know, if it's three percent, five percent, whatever they decide to do, it's kind of nominal compared to the, you know, whether it's my salary or anybody else's, it's, it's, it could be impacted a lot more, so. But yeah, I, I'm conscious of that, and I, I think that they, they would be too. But it, it would be based on the, the current amount, if we're doing it across the board, then this would be on top of that. Or do y'all, I mean, they can say that, well, you know, after, if they do it across the board, whatever that difference is, move it to, to, to the even thousand, you know? And, well, you see what I'm saying, you would add, if whatever percentage they got, add it to what their current salary is.
Right.
And then whatever that difference is, move it to whether it's a thousand or whatever they want to do. That's, that's what, that's what I had in my head anyway.
Don't ask Cornell, he was there. I'm picking, man. Do what? My man.
We did five last year, right?
Right.
Yeah, but that's still, but, but I, I did see something, I, I did see something on the cost of index, was about four point, three point four percent the other day. I saw a three point four was on the cost of living index the other day. Three point four, that's what I saw. So we're going to negotiate, in my opinion.
All right.
Thank you, Cornell. Lee's going, Lee's going to get his money's worth.
You out, you out.
I mean, when you're talking about a percentage raise, the firemen that come, the policemen that come, if you want to give them fifty percent or you want to give them five percent, you want this guy being there first and doing his best, the life guy. To tell you what, during the storm, our guys are out there working, out there, before the storm is even open.
That's correct.
Nowhere in the state do you do that, they wait for the storm to go. Five percent, yeah.
It's coming down.
I'm going to say the same for those, for my guys as well, I mean, that's all I can look at is my guys. And, for example, you already said, you already heard some talk from my department, how they're having to double up or triple up. Little raise here, a little raise there, goes a long way to go. Three percent, honestly, when you get your check, you know how it's hit because taxes pay. Five percent, they get, get a little bit last time. We appreciate it. I'm going to say five percent, five, just like I guess.
Oh, it's not fair.
I'm going to get on that ass, truth for them. For example, one of the last times I've been to Walmart.
Man, I know what, I know, I know exactly what you're talking about. I feel it every day, I'm on a fixed income. That's it, I agree with you.
Send people to the academy and get out, that's what I'm saying, for that two years they got.
That's correct.
You pay people, good people, you won't have to look, we are two off the ground, not many.
I agree with you a hundred percent, Frank.
That's correct.
That would be the reason I'd vote for it too, because of the fact that.
I like to say ten.
I know, I know, but again, y'all are convincing me a little more, but I already thought that there's a reason. Oh, I know. Look at them linemen and stuff, they're leaving out and taking off, you know, those kind of people. I know, I know, I know.
That's correct.
And that's why we. That's right, I agree. Y'all all had real good points.
Thank y'all. I think Will spoke great. Mr. Snyder, what'd you say?
I want to speak as a citizen of the town overhead, because we do have this employee, okay? I thought I was okay. I want to speak as a citizen of the village, when you look at our small town and the service that we have. They deserve it, and when you look at what the town pays to train our employees to be as good as they are. You know, our farmers, our policemen, they're on top of their game, and they don't make two, they don't make no moves. They can't make a move, because it's the life that may be innate. The city employees with our sanitation and our utilities do a great job.
On top.
It is not fair for us to put as much as we put in for them, and then some other town or city take them away from us. It's just not right. If we want to keep them, we got to show them that we appreciate it. Even if you don't like to be a racist, you got to do a good thing.
Okay, now, now, now I'm going to tell y'all what I used to be told. Right now, the citizens can trust that the employees of the town get paid more. They are setting the bar for pay right now, and they deserve it. I agree with you. But I will say this, as being the one that's probably supposed to be in charge of the employees and have the day-to-day operation and supervise, supervision of the employees. You're getting paid more, but we're going to expect more. By that, I mean, when you're out and about, and you go buy that trash, you get out and pick it up. And it don't matter where you're a lineman, whether you're a mayor, whether you're an alderman, or, well, I won't say the alderman, but if you work for the town.
I have been saying alderman too.
Yeah.
We all on the team, let's be on the team.
But now, I, if I'm, especially on the weekend, if I go buy trash, I try to pick it up. Now, during the week, I'll go buy it, and I won't pick it up purposely, because I'm going to see how long it stays there. Because I know there's town trucks going by it all day long, and I watch that. I'm just giving you a little tidbit of what I watch for. If there's trash out there, and I don't pick it up, and it stays there at the end of the day, we got a problem. Does that make sense? Y'all get more, you deserve more, but we expect more. And that's what I have to say. Again, thank you y'all for the work that you do. And I guess I'm hearing if somebody wants to make them, uh, well, just say what you want to put in the budget. We're not going to vote on it unless, you know, if you're against it, come up with that percentage. I think I'm hearing.
I'll make a motion, we'll do five percent.
Okay.
And I make a motion that we do seven percent, that's me.
Now, one of the other things we do have to consider is how much money this is we're talking about. We can't just, you know, we, we do need to take that into consideration.
I definitely agree.
We got two motions with no seconds yet.
I agree with the five percent, and whether y'all want to talk about it this time or next, but like, so you did seven, you used two for the incentive reserve merit raise.
That's not a bad idea. I mean.
I'd say on the merit raise, we need to establish a merit program to where they can come with those, that's, has to be some guy. That's, has to be some guidelines on a merit evaluation program.
Are you gonna second the five, or? Now, we have a motion and a second. Is there, I mean, Ms. Rose, I appreciate the seven motion, I mean, but, I mean, the motion, but is there a second for the seven percent? Okay. That motion fails. So what we've got on the board for discussion is the five percent. And then we'll have a vote, and it'll be added to it, and we'll be through as far as unless somebody does something else, but that addresses. Did y'all come up with, y'all haven't done your own yet, have you? Did y'all decide on y'all's yet? Oh, okay, well. We can't do that, I'm sorry. All right, so, I, I guess we'll do a little vote here, do y'all want, uh, everybody in favor, let's do a roll call vote of the five percent increase across the board, which I think is, is, is better than three. Better than three, but anyway, so go ahead.
Motion made by Alderman Betts for a five percent pay raise for across the board for all employees. Second by Alderman Smith, Alderman Betts.
Yes.
Alderwoman Denny.
No.
Alderman Gardner. Alderman Probst.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Okay.
The motion here.
Five percent. All right. Now, to conclude tonight, is there, I want to hear somebody just say, I mean, just what you want to put in, and then we would come up with the, with the, uh, with the verbiage for an ordinance change for the alderman. And we would try to coordinate that with, uh, the new year taking over, and probably finish up the approval for it, sometime in, uh, be August to be approved. Introduce it in July, and we can discuss the other, the other salaries, uh, clerk, with first, but we gotta, you know, get it all selected and voted on and elected, and then go from there with it, so. Eight hundred, nine hundred thousand, I'm okay, I think a thousand, I see where a lot of towns, a lot smaller, they're getting eight hundred. I think that y'all have a responsibility to be engaged, uh, work with us on trying to do what's right for the town. I think y'all are doing a good job. I appreciate the ones that do communicate with me and, and inform me about things. And I appreciate any kind of involvement with employees that is done with me. And that way I can handle and make sure they're being done right, if you have, if you hear some complaints, I, I do appreciate the communication. Really do, I encourage it in fact. We got a lot of work to get done this next four years, a lot of work, and I'm excited about it. I think we're just gonna, I think everybody's gonna be impressed with, with what direction we're going. We've come a long way. We've had eight years, and we've done a lot of progress, we've made a lot of progress. Town is, is strong, strong, strong financially. It don't mean we got money to throw away, and we can't do that, even though we're sitting on some good investments. It don't mean we can spend it, most of that's special revenue for people who thinks you're just sitting there, if they see that money sitting out there, and oh, y'all got plenty of money, it's restricted, you can't spend it, special revenue funds, you've got to be followed certain protocols to get to it. So with that in mind, uh, I'd like for y'all to consider a thousand dollars. Would anybody be against that?
Might as well be honest.
Hey, I, hey, look, and I, I think, I think there will be those citizens that's gonna applaud you, or I think there will be. You know, is this something y'all want to vote on too, or you want to just go ahead and just put it in there for that? And, and subject to us getting it where we can, uh, is tied to attendance.
Definitely so, if we, if you do pass it, that's one stipulation I have to say. Attendance should be attached.
I would like for somebody to make a motion to, to increase something to a thousand dollar. After the, after the five percent is applied, the difference would be making a total of a thousand, subject to attendance at the meeting. If not, it goes, it reverts back to the, whatever it currently is after the raise.
And they, and, and I'll say this on attendance, if there's a medical issue or something like that, which would be put in there, that would be a different situation.
And it, it might be law dictates what that.
Right, right.
You know, so. But we would want.
Let me ask a question. If you investigate this and they say, no, you can't. What's that, the seven hundred dollars plus the five percent?
I would hope that people would make that change or make that call. I would hope the people's voice would speak out. That's my hope or prayer. Okay? So what I'm hearing is we'll do that subject to, one of y'all, I mean, we, we don't really need a motion, if y'all are kind of, kind of in agreement with that, I think that's what we'll put in there, and we'll come up, we'll introduce the ordinance in August, I mean, in July.
You know. Pro-rated, who said that?
We, we'll, we'll figure it out, we'll figure it out. Don't y'all, look, don't muddy the water anymore than what it is right now.
Now, they, now, we never did get, not Randy, Randy Roberts, we never did get anything, he's sitting back there.
Well, I, I mean, as everybody knows, our next meeting, we're gonna elect department heads. I will go ahead and put on the record that I will be, as y'all know, Lee Staggs is retiring after a, a very good, doing a good job for the town. And I will be recommending to the council, I don't see any other changes, uh, in any of our departments, but I will be recommending Mr. Randy Roberts, who is here tonight, to be the new department head over, uh, street and sanitation. Randy, uh, thank you very much. He's, uh, his family's been, uh, got roots here in Badaia forever. And, uh, we, he's done, a lot of y'all might know him, he used to be on the highway, you saw him all the time. And we have some great workers, you know, our riverfront is, is pristine, our highway was pristine, and we want to make sure we're gonna make it even better with some of the things. Randy is a very, very good, hard worker, he leads by example. He's, uh, he's, he's smart, and, uh, he's gonna do a good job with that department. And I'm gonna be recommending him, I hope I'll have council support, because I'm gonna bring him up every month. If you don't vote for him, I'm gonna bring him up every month. But, uh, anyway, uh, I do want to thank everybody, you know, there's somebody else here I do want to recognize. She, she's sitting back there like you don't know what she's doing, but.
Rhonda, Rhonda, I couldn't help it, Rhonda, I had to tell them.
Tommy, Tommy said we need to rec. But, uh.
I thought that might be what you were doing.
I didn't, you know. Rhonda, Rhonda's a, I guess a lifelong resident of Badaia, her, her father recently passed away, who was a, a pillar of the community, Mr. Charlie Ferguson was her dad, and, uh, she works at her fire department, or her sister, D'Anthony Paul, works here in, in city hall. And, uh, that's lovely family that Charles, I mean, live only in his family. And, uh, and the work they did, they recently donated, I mean, uh, honored Charlie by naming the field down at the junior high, that for Charlie Ferguson, well deserved, deserves a lot more. And we're all gonna miss, miss Mr. C. A lot of people say, I would, you know, I, I see that a lot of people pass around keys to the city, keys to this, so-and-so day, so-and-so this, so-and-so, we have so many people in Badaia that deserve all these honors, that have passed on before us, and we could never do enough, and, uh, I think we just recognize them and remember them in our hearts and our mind. And if there's something our citizens would like to see us do more to recognize people, I would be open to that. But for sure, Charlie would be somebody that comes to mind that would be deserving of the work that he did and the impact he had on us. His kids, school, ball-playing, police, I mean, just a, just a friend. I mean, just somebody who was a mentor in, and it's kept a lot of kids off, off the wayward path, I think.
Good year.
So, good guys. Uh, anyway, okay, so, any other question on the budget, we're gonna, we're gonna get out of here, it's only been an hour. Did I hear a motion that we accept this budget? Oh, wait, whoa, we gotta back up, I'm sorry, we did not address one issue. We have not come, we have not gotten an agreement with city court yet. As many of you know, we've, uh, you'll see there's a shortage right now in the city court. Uh, it's showing a negative, I think it's eighty-eight thousand, I'm just trying to remember, I'm trying to go from memory. All of our work in the past, we had an agreement with the current judge, and had a cooperative endeavor agreement with what the judge would do to, more or less, we won't necessarily say supplement, but would give a check back to the town, you know, for some of the cost that the city court incurred. Right now, city court, the way it looks, it costs the town nearly three hundred thousand dollars to have city court, and we're only getting out of the revenues of about seventy-seven thousand, which is a very good deal. And the city court for years has supplemented that, but for two years, we've been trying to negotiate to get a, an agreement, which that's what we feel like is required by the law, required by the, the state, for us to have an agreement on what that dollar would be, that they would help supplement some of their cost expense, which they have, those monies. And I'm asking for approval of the, of the budget tonight with the, with the negative in there, there's money in the fund balance that's setting in a, a checking account that is maintained by the judge. But I would say that once we get to that shortfall, that as it stands now, that they would have to fund that, and the town would not make any transfers from general fund to put into that fund to pay those bills. Uh, now, we do have to pay operational costs, that's required by statute of the court. And in operational costs, we know what those are, those are, you know, office equipment, furniture, printers, things of that nature. And, uh, so we want, until we get that agreement, I'm gonna leave it as is, with the shortage in there, there's money in the fund balance to cover it, and that would require them writing a check out of that fund balance to cover it.
Isn't that what we talked about prior to?
But it would be best if we just had the agreement, then, we, how many months ago have we been talking?
Been a while.
Been a while. And we still can't, um, uh, they had a meeting today at length, and still, still no movement. And so I'm just suggesting to the aldermen, so they will be aware of it, that, uh, once we get to that point, that we would require them to fund it themselves.
And did y'all ever find it?
Oh, oh, yeah, there's, there's agreements that the.
You did find?
Previous, the previous two judges signed agreements, agreeing to a specified amount, and, uh, and that's, that's been, we can't get any kind of agreement or any kind of movement at all.
And, uh. I'm gonna tell her some things that we, as a city, that we are required to do.
Right.
As minimum.
Right.
So if we.
We do our minimum, that's all we gotta do.
That's what I'm saying, we do.
There's substantially way less than what.
We do, probably do more than we're supposed to do. We can cut it back to a minimum. I think we do more than a minimum.
We do.
But we could do less, we could go to minimum.
I don't know, I can't, I can't, I can't answer that. I mean, there's communication, but there's no, there's no.
Action.
Activity, there's no, I mean, we, I know that Jay and Deborah worked hours and hours as well as me, and, uh, discussions, and, and stakeholders involved in this, and we still, it's been two years, and still no, no movement or agreement. And, you know, I hate it, uh, but we've got to look out for the town. And what's best for it. So with that being said, that's all I had. So as presented, do I hear a motion, we approve this budget?
Motion.
Motion made by Alderman Probst, there's a second.
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Denny, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all right, the budget is passed, thank you guys, I appreciate it very much for your, for attendance. Now, do I hear a motion, we adjourn? Motion made by Alderman Smith, there's a second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Betts, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Stand and adjourn.